Good evening, everyone. We're here to have a special meeting of Michigan City Economic Council the day July 30th. Ms. Nyalup on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
President.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
President.
Mr. Mack.
President.
Ms. Teich. And she is here?
No. I think she was at a different meeting, right?
All right. Mr. President Balinski.
What's going on? President.
Paul, Mr. Paul President Balinski.
President.
Mr. Simmons.
President.
Ms. Jigus.
President.
And Ms. Tillman.
President.
We have eight, eight present and one absent. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum. I was notified by Councilwoman Deitch. She is traveling. She had a trip scheduled prior to this meeting being scheduled. I was unable to make the time work, so now she'll come here. So Ms. Nyalup, first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only approving the extensions of Mayor's Executive Order 092020, extending the declaration of a public health emergency due to the COVID-19 virus and temporary closing of Washington Park. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
So this is to extend the existing executive order nine, which expires tonight at midnight. There is no other order in place that Mayor Perry issued. So if this doesn't pass tonight, there will be nothing in effect to keep the beaches closed at any stop. So I know that's a concern, but it will be pretty much this or nothing at this point. So this is to extend it for the next, essentially two weeks until a time where either we have something else in place or the mayor has a new executive order prepared. So that's where we are tonight. So are there any council comments? Any councilmen? Paul President Westky?
Um, I'm half-heartedly gonna support this. And the reason being is that after all the discussion we had the other day and we brought up about the beaches being open and not posted that they're closed on, on the Sheridan Beach area, that I would have hoped that something else would have come out of that meeting. And I, I think if we're gonna close the beaches, that we should close all of them for everyone. Because if we're gonna be concerned about public safety and spreading whatever, everything should be closed down. So like I said, I'm, I'm half-heartedly supporting this, but I just don't think it, I just don't think it's right to leave Sheridan Beach open and not address Sheridan Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Paul, I mean, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Mack.
Okay, uh, I would, I would like to support this resolution, but I, I, what I would like to do is make an amendment to it. I know I can't give you anything in writing. Because you know, it's too, it's too late for that, I guess, but you know, we, we received this, I don't know, last night or today. I saw it. Got a copy of it. But I would like to make amendment to it and I would support it if it did include the Sheridan Beach stops two through 13, or at least put signage up there at the stops, which the city does own. Uh, we do own that, and I believe we own the stops from there down to the waterfront. Uh, because I took a drive down there this afternoon. And you know, it's always, and I heard from other folks, well, you know, it's a big issue to, you know, put signage on there, you know, nobody's gonna obey it, what have you. But I took, I took a ride down to Stop 7 again, which is Beach Walk. And there's no signage down there about any beach being closed, or this entrance way to the beach is closed. Uh, you know, and the reasons why, because of the COVID-19 crisis. And I know that we as a council, in listening to many concerns last Tuesday night, that we don't want people using the beach because of COVID, and COVID's on a increase, which it is, that, you know, we should, we should close that down also if we're really concerned, if we're really concerned about the public health and safety of the people of not only Michigan City, but Illinois, Ohio, Wisconsin, New York, New Jersey. Because when I went down to Stop 7 today, I took a walk down to the beach and there were a lot of people down there. Uh, also then I took a drive through Beach Walk and I counted, or took a pretty good count of the number of license plates, out-of-state license plates. I didn't count the Indiana license plates. But there were close to 190, 190 out-of-state license plates in that housing development there. So I guess you could multiply that by, I don't know, 3.5, or, you know, Mr. Shin gave us a number the other day, is how many people maybe come into the park in a car and he multiplied, he had 3.5. Well, let's just say four. So if you're looking at four, you know, you're looking close to, I don't know, an additional 700, 800 people that might be going down there if they all went down at one time. Uh, to me, that there is a big promotion of COVID. If we're worried about groups coming together. So you have that issue with Beach Walk. Then you have the other rental properties that are down in that part of the, uh, the city. Let's multiply things. Then you could have people parking over by Neiman School that are gonna be walking down to Stop 2 through Stop 13. And you know, we're worried about putting maybe another thousand people into Washington Park. Well, we're gonna have another thousand people in Sheridan Beach, and on those beaches, and walking through the neighborhoods, and exposing people that live in those neighborhoods to the COVID. So what I'd like to do at this time, if I can, is to make an amendment to this to also include stops 2 through 13, to at least put signage at each entrance way to the beach, that this entrance way is closed due, due to the COVID-19 entrance way, or in, or to the COVID-19 pandemic.
This, this resolution can only extend the mayor's existing order or not. We can't make any adjustments to the order that the mayor issued. It either, it either passes or it doesn't. So it would have had to been up to the mayor to issue a new one to include all of that at, at this point, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, then.
Do it or not.
Okay, but thank you. But yeah, that's my concern here. And I'm not gonna go through it again. But we are not including stops 2 through Stop 13. And whatever the excuses are or concerns are, we could have been looking at that for three weeks already since the first executive order. And then they, and then, and then it was taken off of there, because I know I brought it up to the attention of the, uh, uh, the administration that, you know, why, why do we even have this on there if we can't, uh, take care of it if we can't manage it? And that's when it came off of here. Uh, I'm just not sold on the idea that we can't manage it and that we're gonna go ahead and expose all these people to COVID. And now that the city of Gary is shutting their beaches down, the city of Portage is shutting their beaches down, Ogden Dunes is shutting their beaches down. Well, I can guarantee you on Facebook, from here on out, it's gonna say Stop 2 through Stop 13 and Michigan City in Indiana is wide open. So come to Michigan City. So now if we can just imagine how many more people, how many more people are gonna be coming into town because of that? I mean, that frightens me more than leaving or reopening Washington Park with the plan that we had put together in two days. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Mack.
Um, I'm kind of in agreement with both President Balinski's statements, especially the one about half-heartedly. Um, I wanna ask you though, is there any way this could be amended to do seven days instead of 14? Is the 14-day period arbitrary?
It would have had to been, it would have had to, the amendment would have had to been submitted to the clerk in writing prior to now.
Right. Because, uh, you, you know, my dislike about this whole thing is, is kind of what they've already reiterated. Uh, to the west, the marina, they're still gonna be able to operate and function until the other side of the lake is the Stop 2 and further, and they're gonna function in the manner that they did. And the only area that's affected is that middle piece. And it would be nice if we were to be able to allow our residents, or at least the sticker holders, to enjoy what in our city, uh, two pieces of populations are gonna continue to enjoy. Um, and that, that's the lens that I look at, at it through, that our inability to, uh, handle this situation totally from the marina to the Stop 2 and further is, uh, is what's, what's creating this disparity of lake usage. I'll just put it that way. And I, and I don't like it, but I don't like it for the, the reasons that, you know, we're not able to, it's kind of all or nothing. We're just not able to do anything to handle it. And that's why I would like a shorter amount of time to allow the park department and some people to actually possibly come up with something, because two weeks, three weeks, if the mayor actually extended any longer, or again, the season's over. And if that's, this addressing this and prolonging, uh, what could be just done like the other towns, just eliminated. If we're not, if we're not extending the mayor's orders with a purpose of us attempting to do something, why not just extend it for 30 days and be done with the season? Um, this is, this is the part that's gonna, I think, continue this discussion to go and go and go. And, uh, you know, with Gary closing, it's gonna be a, just a demand for this product here. Lakefront is gonna be high, and once again, I believe it's gonna be high after our park department closes. And we're gonna still be in the same situation of people wanting something to do. Uh, people enjoying late night at the lake, and there's gonna be no supervision out there as it sits now. Hopefully we'll come up with something. Um, I respect all of these visitors to come to Michigan City. I think we should be able to capture more of that income entrepreneurially. So I, I, I really don't wanna poo-poo or, you know, make this a us against them deal. Uh, we've just got to get ready, uh, park department and a lot of other areas of the city to, uh, address this new dynamic that's not going away. So I'm gonna half-heartedly support it, the same way that Mr. President Balinski said.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, um, and you know, we're, you're, we're talking about half-heartedly supporting this. Uh, the very first executive order that the mayor wrote actually had closing Washington Park and stops 2 through 13, but it got voted down. Um, so now this is why we have what we have now, without 2 through 13 being put in there. Uh, you know, obviously, that's what we, why I wanted, I'm gonna say, I'm just gonna speak for myself. What I wanted the very first time around to have 2 through 13 closed. Um, but that was voted down. This is why it's changed to what we have now, to not include Stop 2 through 13. So I'm half-heartedly voting for this because, you know, I had the full loaf on the table, which I voted to extend, and now I only have the half, which I have to vote, uh, to extend because I do, you know, I have to get Washington Park closed, so. Uh, I wish we had all these feelings, you know, this, this way before, you know, where we could have started by closing everything down and then come back to it. Um, but, you know, it is what it is.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Jigus.
Okay, um, so I see that we're stuck with this, you know, this resolution right now. However, could a separate one be issued by possibly the mayor, closing the, you know, 2 through 13? Or, you know, for that, just a separate resolution? And then also, can our signage be worded such that people know that this is, you know, not okay to go to the beach? Because they still have to pass over, you know, our jurisdiction to get there. So perhaps we can just put a sign up as, you know, whatever sign is legally possible, just to kind of discourage and say, due to the crowds, social distancing is impossible. And there's still an order in Indiana to social distance and wear masks up until the end of the month. So perhaps there's a separate order that can help take care of that problem. I have also heard from Sheridan Beach residents, and, you know, they're not the ones at the beach. They're saying they're too afraid to even get close to the beach because it's mobbed with people not social distancing and not wearing masks. So perhaps we can do a separate order. And again, we could still put signage up to the limit of what, you know, we can say.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments?
I would, um.
Councilwoman Tillman.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, President. Um, in regards to Councilwoman Jigus, that I agree as far as the signs go, that would be some type of precautionary if for whatever reason something were to happen, um, or anyone taking ill that they can't say they haven't been told, there was no warning signs or anything implemented out there. So if that is doable, then I, I would be in agreement with putting up signs as well with appropriate language.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments? Councilman Simmons.
You hear me?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna go on, on record as well, uh, I'm also in favor of, you know, including 2 to 13. I, yeah, we, we missed the boat on that, but we're stuck with, uh, moving this this evening, but I just wanna be in favor of 2 and 13 as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Councilman Paul President Balinski.
Well, I, I appreciate everyone's comments and concerns and, uh, the research that we, we have been doing on this is, uh, I think everybody that's down in the park system should know what's going on down there. And, uh, that this order could have been amended and re, and put the right verbiage in there after we had our meeting Tuesday night and talked about all of our concerns. So to me, from an email that I wanted to read is, is this, is that, uh, it's from a Michigan City resident, and it says, "Please come together as the representatives of the city to work together to make us look our very best and to do what is the best for every resident of this city." The residents of this city. That's my, that's my F, uh, my emphasis is on that last of that sentence, because we could have had something in front of us to include those stops, but it's not. We talked about this Tuesday night, but it's not on here. And I'm not, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road. What, what I am concerned with is that there's no signage up. There's not even a fine posted. So I think what really needs to be done here is to research what we as the city council can do on the issuance of fines, so that there's an ordinance number to go along with this, so somebody can be given a, a civil ticket. I don't know why, why we're not getting tough about it, because it's, it's, it's not gonna go away. And, uh, I just, I, I don't, I really don't understand, and I'm not picking on anybody, but fair is fair. All of the beaches should be shut down. And I appreciate, uh, Don, Don's, uh, investigation down there, and I was down there yesterday morning. And, and just people were coming down there and it was, it, it was a lot of people coming down in between 2 and, uh, Stop 4. And those people said, I asked a couple of them, I said, "Is the beach open?" "Yeah, the beach is open." Well, so here we are, and we're supposed to get into this, and we're supposed to be concerned about our residents. And then we hear that people who live down there are concerned about it and aren't even going to the beach. Aren't even, they're, they're not accessing, or, uh, are they hostage in their own neighborhood? I mean, we have some, a lot of things ironed out here, and I think that the, it should have been included in this resolution. All, all beaches will be closed? In a listing of the fines in it, so we could pass an ordinance to mirror that. That's what should be done, in my, in my estimation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman President Westky.
Yeah. Uh, last comment on this subject is, and I know that, you know, I just found out about Sheridan Beach and a lot of people going down there last week. And, you know, and just like the other council members, you know, we started investigating this. And, you know, here we are, a week, a week later, a week and a half later, you know, making recommendations to things that we think should be down there. And, you know, if you, if you really take a hard look at it, I mean, to me, these are things that could have been put in place prior to now, you know, like with signage. Uh, okay, for whatever legal aspects, if you can't shut the whole beach down because of this high watermark issue I keep hearing about. Well, I know legally that we can shut the entrances down, then why wasn't that done? Why do we have to wait till the 11th hour, you know, to bring this up as suggestions? To me, if we're really serious about this and we're trying to find things to, you know, resolve the problem and trying to do everything fair for everybody in town, you know, I, I would think that some of this stuff would have been done, uh, by now. And we don't have to wait till a council meeting, uh, to bring this stuff up and, you know, make it look like, you know, we're trying to run departments or what have you. Because that's truly not my objective here. You know, I always just try to bring things up for the best of, uh, you know, what I think should be done, but, you know, I guess, you know, we, this isn't the first time, but, you know, I guess suggestions are good. But I don't know why it always has to come up in a council meeting, the things that, uh, should be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Any other council comments? So once again, this resolution is only to extend the existing order. It cannot be amended. We cannot make any changes to the order. The order is the way the order is. We either accept it or, or we don't. Uh, everyone had a chance, when we spoke after workshop, we could have drafted something. I don't, I don't see anything that was presented by anyone. There's a ordinance that was worked on. And I spoke to several of you. It doesn't seem like we were agreeing on much. So I don't know how anything could happen if we can't come to a consensus as to what happens. We're, we're, we're more concerned with the particulars of how it gets executed and who's gonna pay for it, or where is the manpower coming from? That's not our job. That's the administration's job. Our job is to set the policy. And the, the, the executive has to work the details out. So, uh, is there, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Simmons and a second by Councilwoman Tillman. All right, uh, Ms. Nyalup on the vote, please.
Uh, Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul President Balinski?
You're muted.
Mr. Paul President Balinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman? Ms. Tillman?
Um.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Did Ms. Tillman vote? I don't know if Ms., uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
Actually, I heard her say aye. I did hear her say aye.
I, I did not.
Okay, well.
I'm sorry.
I heard your protest. Okay, so we have Mr., uh, we have Ms. Jigus, Mr. Paul President Balinski, Ms. Tillman, Mr. Dabney, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Uh.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Don President Balinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you. The resolution passed. Ms. Nyalup, our, uh, first resolution on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only establishing rules for attendance and ad use of the Washington Park and penalties for violating same and for violating park department rules concerning the use of Washington Park and the zoo. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul President Balinski, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Don President Balinski.
All right, does the author have anything to add at this time?
Um, Mr. President, I was wanting to ask the council to, uh, I wanted to table this for at least three meetings and, uh, bring it off the table if, uh, after this executive order or before this executive order ends, to come up with a, some type of penalty, uh, and some guidelines to be, uh, hashed out, I guess you could say, hash this, hash the, uh, guidelines out on penalties. And, uh, I need, uh, I've talked to Mr. Myers and I believe we're gonna, I'm going to ask the city attorney on the park department's authority, or if we have to, uh, pass a conjuncting ordinance on their rules. So there's penalties assigned to the, uh, their rules that they put in place. So at this time, I'll be asking to table it, table this for three, uh, meetings.
And so we have a motion by Councilman Paul President Balinski, table this for three meetings.
Second.
Second. There's a second by Councilman, uh, President Balinski.
Don President Belinsky.
Uh, are there any objections to this?
This will be September fifteenth.
Vote on it.
I just wanna, I just have a quick question for the attorney, right? Um, Tim, if we, if anybody has an objection to table, then what does that do?
Nothing.
Nothing unless there's, you know, the majority rules here.
Right.
This is not a case of unanimous consent.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Nyadon on the vote, please.
Mr. Paul President Belinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Mr. Dabney?
Uh.
Mr. Dabney, okay. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mac?
Aye.
Mr. Don President Belinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Jiegus?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, this ordinance could be table for uh two. Okay, uh I think that was all we had on the agenda, so I uh entertain a motion to return.
I make a motion.
Second.
A motion for Councilman Paul President Belinsky seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, good evening. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Get a bye.
Wear your mask.